Okay, good evening. I call the City Council Committee, the whole meeting for Wednesday, November 19th, to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence. You can think about whatever it is you'd like to think about, please. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman Kelly in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
Mr. Krupp, if you please call the rule. Arden?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinhardt?
Present.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Teedun?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
Ann Burkholder?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome, everybody. As we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee, the whole, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and also those who are viewing on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For folks in here, if you'd be kind enough to put your cellphone on silent, simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council tonight on a particular item, wait to be recognized and come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. If you want to address the council, please address the council as a body and not to any one individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator, Mr. Gleason, anything tonight?
Two items, mayor, council, and to the community. Just want to make sure that everybody's aware that at K-Square, we have the tree lighting this Friday at 6:00 p.m. And then next week, because of Thanksgiving, the council meeting will be on Tuesday night instead of Wednesday night.
Roger that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one public hearing this evening on community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinhardt will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for case ORD 25-03, being the request of Leveraged Holdings LLC to amend Chapter 17.08 entitled "Uses" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to allow wholesale establishment as a permitted use in the C3 zoning district and add principal use standards for wholesale establishments. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinhardt. Next is petition communications. Anybody tonight, council folks? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to say it was wonderful to see everybody who was at the screening last night for the Iowa PBS Historic Buildings of Iowa/Davenport Edition. It was at the Figgy last night. It was a sort of the non-broadcast premiere, but it will be on Iowa Public Television on Tuesday, December 2nd at 7:00 p.m. It's an hour long and it looks at... They've done several of these throughout the state and we are the third or fourth one of these and features some of our historic buildings. So if you enjoy that, Tuesday, December 2nd at 7:00 p.m. on Iowa Public Television. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Burkholder?
Thank you. Next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will be coming through Davenport at 6:00 p.m. So if you have kids, grandkids, it's kind of fun, so I hope everybody goes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Fair good. We'll move to the four areas of discussion. The first day is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinhardt will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a second consideration ordinance for case ORD 25-02, being the request of the city of Davenport to amend Title 17 entitled "Zoning" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa regarding solar farms as a principal use and freestanding solar panels as an accessory use. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you. I just wanted to just remind staff that I had sent a note last... early this week about some... I still continue to have some concerns about this, and I understand there are wider implications than what is just... what the city consider in terms of, you know, other statewide issues that might be building around regulations. But I have those concerns and I understand that we can't have that tonight and... but I would, you know, this is our second round at this, so we have, I guess, our last time to deal with this would be the two... one cycle in December. So hopefully, we can have something at least early before maybe the committee, the whole, for this last cycle. So thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, I would just recommend that that stay on discussion and as we get information that we have as much discussion as a council as possible, and if there's anyone who is contemplating making any changes, that you bring them forth so that we can communicate and talk through those things before the third consideration. All right. Moving on to item number two, which is a first consideration ordinance for case ORD 25-03, being the request of Leveraged Holdings LLC to amend Chapter 17.08 entitled "Uses" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to allow wholesale establishment as a permitted use in the C3 zoning district and add principal use standards for wholesale establishment. Anyone from the public here to comment on this? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Tom Pasternak, Davenport attorney and attorney for the petitioner, mayor, council. I believe the caption pretty much sums up what we're trying to accomplish, which is to put wholesale establishments in a certain commercial district. In this case, it's the C3 district. And our thoughts are, at this particular point of time, that anyone that's been engaged in real estate development and commercial real estate development knows that retail's kind of languishing. So our premise is fairly simple on this, and that's anything that would stabilize and/or re-energize the C3 districts is a good thing for C3. It's certainly a good thing for Davenport, and whatever questions you have, we'd be glad to address them. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, is there anyone from council? Seeing no one, Alderman Reinhardt, I would recommend that this stay on discussion as well. Item number three is a resolution approving case F25-13, being the request of Elmore Storage LLC for a final plat of Jersey Farms Commercial Park 5th Edition, a two-lot subdivision on 13 acres located at 6403 Elmore Avenue. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or word, please.
Good evening, council. Mayor Thaddeus Hartog, 517 Turnberry Lane, Davenport, Iowa. I'm also the petitioner and owner of Elmore Storage. This lot was originally set up to accommodate two phases of the project. We developed the first half into storage. We no longer feel that it's economically viable to continue for second phase. We're going to subdivide the lot and look to do something else on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Are there any comments from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Alderman Reinhardt, will you please set our agenda?
Yes, I make a motion to place item number three on consent and leave item number one and number two on discussion.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, our agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinhardt. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7, No Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Schedules" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Mississippi Avenue along the east side from Kimbley Road to 39th Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7, No Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Schedules" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding West High Street along the south side from Gane Street to Brown Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will also move on. Next, we have item number three, resolution approving street lane and public ground closure requests on listed dates and times for outdoor events. We have Ballet Quad Cities Nutcracker School Program, River Center/Adler Theater, 136 East Third Street, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Friday, December 12th, 2025, closure Northernmost Parking Lane/Loading Zone, westbound traffic lane and center lane on East Third Street from Brady Street to Iowa Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under Section A, the new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer, et cetera. Actually, there's only one. We have the museum bar at Agnisiast Arts Museum, 322 Brady Street, new license, license type, Class C liquor on premises. And then we have those items under Section B, the annual license renewals, which I will not read, but are there for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, then I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn, please set our agenda.
I'll make a motion to put all items of public safety on the consent agenda. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Tim Dunn. The next area is public works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under FY 2024 Contract Sewer Repair Program by Peterson Plumbing and Heating of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $537,317.46. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the Junior Theater renovation at the Davenport Learning Center project by Bill Bruce Builders Incorporated of Belge Iowa in the amount of $372,254.43. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the Oak Street, 2804 Oak Street to West 29th Street Reconstruction Project by Eastern Iowa Escavating and Concrete LLC of Cascade, Iowa in the amount of $274,658.52. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number four is a resolution accepting work completed under the Riverview Terrace Park ADA Accessibility Project as part of the 2024 Residential Alley Resurfacing Program by Emory Construction Group Incorporated of Moline, Illinois in the amount of $58,588.8. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward.
Sheriff Shagna, third ward. And I'm extremely confused by the way it seems to be falling into the residential alley resurfacing program, considering Clay Street does not have any alleys. Alleys do not exist on Clay Street. So it was our understanding that that work was to be done under Parks Department using ARPA funds. And also, the contract that was issued for... was for about $78,000. This is $58,000, so I'm not sure whether 20K difference ends up going. But these are some of the questions and confusion I have about this. Also, whether is the project really done? I don't know where... as far as the concrete is done, it appears to be complete. It appears that the contractor did what they were asked to do. It is not the contractor's fault that... I don't believe it's the contractor's fault that a heavy cement truck spent a day, day and a half, sitting on an old brick road, and now there's huge divots in the road that didn't exist before, and water is pooling there really bad. And when that water freezes, we're going to have a whole new set of problems, disasters waiting to happen. Also, I'm not positive where their work done is and the city's responsibility is. Sidewalks are cracked. It was a huge concern that handicap people be able to get inside there. And recently, it was blocked, but now it's opened back up with a limestone where someone in a wheelchair can get through. But if anyone's coming from anywhere else, they pretty much have to go uphill to get in a sidewalk or up a sidewalk, and if they don't have a motorized scooter between the cracks, the not level surfaces, some of it being uphill. And then, when you get close to the view, that part is still tore up. And again, I don't know where one responsibility starts and the other one ends. I would like to ask if the garbage cans come out closer to the parking instead of being all the way on the other side of the brick wall. Less people are over there, more people are spending time just in their cars again. And that's pretty much all the notes I have, other than the fact that it, again, falling under residential, on the residential alley versus what we were told.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman McGinnis.
I will not ask Mr. Shag tonight. Is Mr. Shag still here? I'm not going to ask you to respond to these questions tonight, but I know you have some of the answers. I would point out, this was... we were... it was never said or told that it was ARPA funding. There was a... and I believe when we... when the... this came forward, there was an explanation of why it was in the alley program, but this was never ARPA funding, so.
Brian Shad, City Engineer. It's actually general obligation bonds. The reason it is a little odd, falling under the CIP for the residential alleys, but really, it was a very similar work. We already had a couple alleys, so we bundled it to drive the price down a little bit. Worked out great for the contractor, and we saved a little bit versus bid mid on its own. I'll follow up with the work. The contractor's work has been completed. We also have a little bit for parks to do here in the future, too, if you'd like to clean it up.
And I don't know if it was you and I who talked about the other part of this, the accessible sidewalk on Clay Street, not at the park, but on Clay Street just beyond, is a very narrow. And we talked about that work being coming part of the sidewalk, the accessibility. It was not ever planned to be done, but there's a telephone pole that's always been there. There's been a narrow space always there, and so we had... we talked about next year in the next year's accessibility adding that. And I don't know if we had the conversation, I think.
Yes, we did.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion, put one through three on consent, and leave number four for discussion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And this concludes public works for this evening. Your Honor, back to you. Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Tim Kelly. Next area is finance. Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Burkholder will discuss. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have eight items on the finance agenda. Item number one, second consideration, ordinance amending Chapter 6.04 entitled "Animals" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to incorporate community cat recommendations from the Joint Task Force between the Humane Society of Scott County and the City of Davenport. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward, state your name, order, or address.
Mary Johansson, first ward. I saw this, that TNR program. I think it's... I have a TNR cat. I always thought Davenport had a TNR program, but apparently not. Somebody dumped her in my neighborhood, and she had kittens in my garage. And that was 12 years ago. And she gets shots, she gets flea and tick, and she gets fed, and she has places to go. The neighborhood knows her by two different names. Oh, she's established in the neighborhood. Now, there's not a lot of other cats that are loose, but I just recently got this from the library. It's called Cat City. It's how Chicago dealt with their TNR and how it came out and how many people were involved in the care of these cats. It's a very good informative for a city to watch, and it involves everybody that thinks loose cats are a terror. Birders, for one thing. I am all for the TNR program, but it's not a cat problem, it's a human problem. If we can make humans responsible, we wouldn't have this. It wouldn't be a budget issue. But if you can get a group of people and organize this, I think the Humane Society can do a better job than what's happening. And I don't know if you know this, but Clinton just disclosing their Humane Society. So that's going to create an animal problem for Clinton, depending on what they're going to do with loose animals. I don't know if Davenport is having a budget issue. I'm sure every city is having a budget issue. But there's a humane way to approach this cat thing if we can just educate humans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
So just to point out, there is a... and I'm looking, is Teagan here? There is... could you talk a little bit about the event, I believe it's at the Figgy? And I apologize for putting you on the spot. I was trying to find it here, and I can't find it in my email. But it's a... it's an education program on TNR for people, and it might be something to be interested in.
I was actually going to catch you after the fact. So the Iowa Federation of Humane Societies in partnership with Cats in Action, which is a Chicago-based TNR group, is inviting a guest speaker to the Figgy at 5:30 on December 8th, which is on Monday. So we will be working with our comms team to push out more information about that, but that was just finalized.
And that will be open to the public, correct?
Absolutely, yes. Free to the public, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from council wishing to address this item? Seeing none, item number one moves on. Item number two, second consideration, ordinance amending Chapter 12.72 entitled "Conduct in Public Parks" of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to update language and requirements outlined in the Iowa State Code, Chapter 724.28. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, item number two moves on. Item number three, resolution adopting and approving tax compliance procedures relating to tax-exempt bonds. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, item number three moves on. Item number four, resolution approving the agreement and release from the estate of James W. Victor. Now, I will take a chair's privilege because it is my understanding that there's a request for this item to be postponed to allow staff to acquire information or obtain the information that council is requesting. I believe the request is for it to be postponed indefinitely. I personally would be in favor of postponing for one cycle, but I will see what the council wants to do. But I do think that prior to postponing, it is important for staff to understand the questions that council has. So if there's anyone from council, I will call on them to ask their questions so that staff is clear as to what information is being sought. I, too, have questions that I want to make clear. I made it clear at the management update yesterday that there's information that I wanted, but I wasn't extremely specific. I am prepared to be very specific tonight as to what that is, and then I would certainly entertain a motion to postpone for a cycle. Alderman Rick Dunn.
I guess after everybody is done speaking, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from council wishing to address the item before we entertain the motion? Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. So I got a ton of phone calls about this yesterday, so I want to apologize for my absence last week. We've had a couple more deaths in my family, but I don't have to apologize for that. I'm just letting you know for those folks that feel the need to know. I need to be brought up to speed on Mr. Victor, the monies, the folks that need to know. So if that's the stuff that you... because I heard it was a little animated without me, which is interesting because everybody says it's me, so I would just like to know just the simple things about it that... who was in the room? Because for years, for four years, I've been telling the same conversation that there's information that I don't have. And then it was interesting that once Alderwoman Newton came on board and it was a different voice, no disrespect to her and disrespect to the new folks that are on council, there's a lot of people that don't know. So once again, what are we going to do? Are we going to slap people on the wrist because they're walking out the door like the other folks that had did some misconduct here as a city council person? So it's just interesting to me, what are we going to do? It's tiring to sit up here and have a city lawyer that doesn't have the information for us tonight of council, and I applaud Mr. Gleason for stepping into the position. At least he's trying, but it's just like, this is tiring. So y'all can say what y'all want about me, I ain't never lied. This is exhausting. And will I miss this? No. The backpedaling and the... we have some Olympic swimmers up here that their backstroke is good. So I would like to have information before I walk out the door. So I'm with you, Alderwoman Newton. I would hope that this is one cycle so I can at least get to see this before I walk out the door, because this don't make no sense to me. This is a lot of money. Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Okay, seeing none, I will express my questions. So first and foremost, obviously, I have major concerns in how this is being brought to council. Obviously, it is brought as an agreement, but in reality, it is a request for a ratification that came to council without any prior notice. I've requested in the past that information be provided to council way in advance when it's an agenda item that's not your standard or ordinary item or that otherwise is de minimis in nature, which obviously, this is not. So questions on what I have. Starting with the introduction, it obviously indicates that stakeholders met several times but were unable to reach a mutually acceptable vision to meet the purpose. Who are those stakeholders? I want names of who was involved in these conversations. Who, what, when? Second, we're being asked now to enter into a... it's indicating that the Victor State and the Figgy Art Museum entered into a charitable gift agreement August 20, 2025, and that such is subject to the agreement's approval by the City of Davenport and Scott County. So again, I want clarification that this is, in fact, a ratification if an agreement's already been entered and moved forward on. The last part of the intro indicates that there's necessary approval from the City of Davenport to divest from the named distribution and releases the Victor State from any obligation to pay gift to the city. My questions would be, who decided this would be okay without the approval or consent of the council or even the knowledge of the council that such was taking place? Why was council not made aware of this at any point in time prior to it coming on the agenda this past Friday? Who was involved? I want a timeline of the meetings, the details of who was at the table or behind those closed doors, and what was discussed. Article 9, Section K says, "Five percent was to fund and build and/or support new fountain within the City of Davenport. The project was to be selected and managed by Quasity Arts and Davenport Parks Department." My question is, was Parks involved? And if so, was Parks taking direction from someone, obviously, other than the council? Going on to the resolution itself, the resolution indicates that certain individuals, Kyle Carter, Executive Director of Downtown Davenport Partnership, and Marion McGinnis for the City of Davenport, were enlisted among with other people. My question would be, like, who decided this? From yesterday's meeting, it appears like our mayor didn't even have knowledge of what was going on. And typically, when a committee is formed, it's formed by our mayor. So for our mayor not to even know, that really brings into question who enlisted and who made these decisions that typically are made by our mayor. Also, it says that the agreement was signed August 20, 2025, and the first time the council is actually being made aware of this existence is November 14, this past Friday. Now, let's look at the actual agreement and some questions that I have there. One, it indicates that nothing was found, essentially, there was not... a agreement was not able to be reached. Again, why was the council at no point in time made aware so that the council could provide feedback? I mean, as I sit here, I can think of a million different ideas. Vanderbeer Park, Main Street Landing, I mean, the list goes on and on. So to indicate that nothing could be found, to me, in and of itself, is concerning. It also says that after 16 months of meeting, that an agreement was reached with respect to the gift. So who gave such authority to reach an agreement? That clearly requires the consent of the City of Davenport. At least, as this agreement is written, it's indicating that the City of Davenport must consent. So if the City of Davenport must consent, why is an agreement being reached without the City of Davenport? Obviously, I think there's also a legal question here that I would want legal to fully breach because it appears that agreement's being made that goes outside of the actual will and what was dictated in there. And the person, the city here, or excuse me, entity, who is supposed to be receiving such is being left out of the conversation. If agreement was entered on August 20, 2025, why is that now being requested for us to ratify something that was already entered into? I guess what I'm trying to make clear is here, we have an agreement presented, but it's more a ratification from my perspective, which is completely different than an initial agreement. When it talks about on page two, paragraph three, regarding these meetings and discussions, again, I want exact information of what meetings took place, the dates, locations, subjects discussed thereon, and those in attendance. Already discussed the other questions there. The release, so I have major concerns with the release contained in the agreement. The city, it'd be releasing, indemnifying and releasing others for even things including any and all issues, disputes, or controversies which could be involved, raised, or pled. If someone was unhappy, let's say hypothetically, the city approves such. I'm not inclined to do so, but let's just pretend hypothetically the city does, and then gets, there's a lawsuit. Why is the city going to take the liability for such? To me, it makes absolutely no sense. It also includes a release for any other local, state, federal law, regulations, or ordinances. But ironically, the agreement signed by the Figgy does not contain the same. So certainly calls into question why the city would be taking on such liability. But the Figgy or others would not. Now, in looking at the actual agreement, then also attached by the Figgy, I see a couple of things that I want more information on. One, it talks about the gift being a million dollars. So the legal question comes in as well as to, does that require council approval to essentially reject the gift because of the amount, obviously over $50,000? Secondly, subparagraph 1.3.8 of the agreement that's already been executed in August indicates that on September 17, 2025, there was to be an unveiling of this artwork. So question is, did this happen? And if so, why would such occur before the agreement is in fact approved by the City of Davenport? And moreover, what happens if we don't approve it? Lastly, looking at the last page of the agreement that was already signed by the Figgy, it looks like it is absolutely clear in Section 2.6 that to the effective date is upon pending approval by, again, the City of Davenport. So it's clearly acknowledged that such cannot take place without approval by the City of Davenport. Yet somehow it was signed in August. Allegedly, an event took place in September. And then it's before council on an agenda item on the 14th of November. So major concerns, red flags are literally waving in our face. And I want answers, and I don't want answers when it's convenient. I want answers promptly. And I think one cycle is more than relevant because obviously, if this is on an agenda, from my perspective, any item that comes before council on an agenda item, staff should be fully prepared and vetted to answer all questions regarding such agenda item because it's already on the agenda. So I think one cycle would be sufficient so that we can get these questions answered. And quite frankly, I don't want to pass this off on the new council. I mean, I know what it feels like to be brand new and have major issues on your very first meeting, and I don't think that would be fair to our newly elected that will be coming on in January. So I think our council needs to get this addressed. We need answers to the questions. If anybody disagrees with what I've said, as you said up here, speak now or forever hold your peace. Alderman Rick Dunn. Motion and a second to table for one cycle. Can you please call roll?
Jobchin? Newton?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Anne Reiner?
Yes.
That is 10. Yes, is Alderwoman Newton?
Thank you. Item number four is tabled for one cycle. Moving on, item number five, resolution studying a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property located at 2301 East 11th Street to the Davenport Fire Antique and Restoration Society petitioner. Anyone from the public wishing to address this matter? Anyone from council? Seeing none, item number five moves on. Item number six, motion approving an agreement for the Modern Woodman Park Stadium Cost Audit with P2P Audit Group LLC of Marion Center, Pennsylvania, for an amount not to exceed $90,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, item number six moves on. Item number seven, motion approving the purchase and installation of new Pilgrimage equipment for the Slavery Park of BCI Burke Company of Fond du, or Fond du Lac, Wisconsin, in the amount of $78,951 using Source World Contract Number 010521-BUR, CIP number 64119. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, item number seven moves on. And last but not least, motion approving submission of the City of Davenport Annual Urban Renewal Report for FY 2025. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number eight? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, number eight moves on. And with that, I would ask Alderwoman Burkholder, can you please set our agenda?
Yes, I can. I make a motion to move items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8 to the consent agenda and item number four tabled for one cycle. Motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? And with that, our agenda set, I yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton, Alderwoman Burkholder. Next is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions? We have not. Next, is there any public with business tonight other than what was on the agenda? Please come forward. Any more to address, five minutes, thank you.
Cheryl Shagma, Third Ward. And I'm going back to the alphabet, and I'm on the letter R. And there was a lot of debate this week. People gave me suggestions, a lot of suggestions for the letter R. One of them was responsibility. And when is the council going to start taking responsibility? Those types of questions. Respect came up and lack of respect. Reality came up. And we just heard someone say, "In reality," or "in fact, the reality is." And so just based on that one comment, I want to talk a little bit about reality and what it is for some people versus it is for other people. And the reality of being in power versus the reality of being powerless, there's a huge gap in between those two. And when someone is in power, and I spoke about this last week, the expectations are that you are going to hold yourself to a higher standard because we are holding you to a higher standard. And as a part of that, we have these expectations of your behavior, including respect, including listening to us when we speak. Because I want to tell you that, and we had this conversation not that long ago, any of you that are married, especially to the men in the group, if you do not listen to your wife enough times, she's going to continue to get louder and louder until you listen, until you hear her. And we're not very different. The word relationship also came up. And there's toxic relationships. And we are in a toxic relationship. I don't like it. I don't like toxic relationships. And it takes, it takes more than one person to have positive relationships. But it's amazing how only one person can make everything toxic. So when you label someone, for instance, as angry, feel free to label me as angry, but you don't know my why or what happened before or how I was told that the, for instance, on the metal, on the scrapping, that the chief of police had gone to the previous city administrator who told him no, when he brought up the problem that we have a problem in this city with people stealing metal. And he was told no in terms of getting into ordinance to treat scrappers like pawn people, and they have to be held to a higher level. I got that information just a minute or two before the meeting. So the city administrator did not hear the chief of police say, "This is what we need, and they have to enforce it," which means they're asking for more work. And if they're asking for more work, you should listen to them. And because the city administrator didn't listen to the chief of police, I had to get loud so the city administrator who's behind me could hear me and what I'm saying. Because I'm going to get loud if you're not listening or hearing what I'm saying. So you can label me angry if you want. You can label me as an angry white woman. I know better. I'm not. But there are times when I am going to get loud because you aren't listening. And welcome to my world for not getting respect and being included. Welcome to our world of not being included, not being given information, and not being respected. And that's part of your responsibility as older people. Respect, responsibility. You can call me angry. I don't care. I know I'm not. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Don Mayden, the Fourth Ward. I don't have anything to say. I'm just up here burning time. There's a young man that's handicapped. Then I went up to the restroom. He had something to say, and I didn't want you guys to just cut him out. So I'm just burning time till he comes back to come up here and say his piece. I can look at everybody in here. You gotta look good sitting up there.
Sir, if you know he's coming back, we'll wait.
Okay.
If you know he's coming back. If you know he's coming back. Roger that. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, if it's okay with council, we'll wait, we'll pause quietly until the gentleman can, as we all know, sometimes we have to go to the restroom sometimes. Anybody else? Sir, please come up and need more to address. And if you're not from here, love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Javon Clark. I don't know what war I'm from. Eastside Davenport. I have a, we, I have an issue with animal control. They took my dogs. I was in the hospital. I got airlifted. I had a seizure. I stopped breathing. I got airlifted. I'm nervous. I don't, I don't know what to do.
Take your time.
But I got airlifted to Iowa City. When I got, got home, I had, I have assistance with my housing. They wanted to have a inspection when I was in the hospital. But my mom and my, my, my sons was taking care of my dogs. They wasn't taking care of my dogs the way I take care of my dogs. When they did the inspection, they said the dogs, you know, we was cleaning the area up. When, when, we was cleaning the area where the dog is, like a garage. And we shampooing and cleaning the supplies. Anyway, the animal control took my dogs. I've been going through Civil Rights Commission, but they work with the city. They're employed by the city. There's nothing they rarely could do. I had an appointment with Mr. Huff. And he said me, I told me, he told me I could get my dogs back. He changed my mind. He never responded to me anymore. I never, never. So my dogs, I don't even know where my dogs at. So Civil Rights, they, they did what they could do and brought the issues. I have, I had another appointment, a meeting with a mediator with the animal control. And they're not a Luna lawyer. That's not, they're no, he's no longer their lawyer. Anyway, so the animal control, basically, the grievance is the woman that handles the animal control, she has a problem with me. She came, the neighbors have chickens. And I let my dogs out, and they get scared. They're like, oh, you can get the chick, the dogs. My dogs, they come back. So they, they, I have a 10 by 10 kennel outside my house. And she, they, I don't know anyway. But they keep on calling animal control on me. And the lady, I don't know. It's a long story. I have all kind of proof, the lawyers, the city lawyers, the mediators, judge on one side. They're not, not taking my, 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 what's going on with me in a situation. Like, my dogs are well taken care of. One incident, then I was in the hospital. They airlifted me to Iowa City for 10 days. And when I, the day I came home, I had the inspection. And it came, you know, I, I wasn't given a chance to prove myself or nothing like that. They just took my dogs. My dogs is, I have a brain injury. My dogs is really important to my recovery. I showed, I proved with doctors, those were the doctors. My, 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 my primary is over.
Yep, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any comment?
This is my help, home helper.
Appreciate it, sir. We'll talk, someone will talk to you after if they want to. Any, anyone else from the public? Any council folks? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Yes, sir, just if you would, if you guys would wait. I think what the mayor was saying, we'll, we'll have someone come and talk to you. We'll find out where you are, okay? So don't leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis? I'm sorry. Alderwoman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. City Administrator, if you could provide council information regarding what this gentleman said. He says he's had communications with the city. If that is in fact true, I want to be briefed on what that is and the status of the situation.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Okay, sir, motion to adjourn. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor? Have a good weekend.